Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Meeting of September 10th, 2019. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter is absent. Councilmember Patron?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with item number three, approval of the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority minutes of August 27th, 2019. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve the minutes.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve is unanimously.
A moment a lot of Norman residents have been looking forward to, particularly those of our residents in Ward Four. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Lee Hall as recommended by the Ward Four Selection Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. I would like to now recognize Judge David Porch to administer the Oath of Office.
Read after me, please. I, state your name.
I, Lee Hall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance.
For the performance or nonperformance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As council member to the best of my.
Let's do it. All right. Item five, we're proclaiming the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation passes unanimously.
The proclamation of the mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week in the City of Norman. Whereas September 17th, 2019 marks the 231st anniversary of the framers of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which shall commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd, 2019 as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. With that, I'd like to recognize Carol Kellison to the podium to accept the proclamation and to say a few words.
On behalf of the Black Beaver Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I accept the proclamation and endorse this proclamation that helps us celebrate this living document that upholds and protects the freedoms central to our American way of life.
Thank you very much. Item six, proclaiming September 15th through October 15th, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast and the proclamation is approved.
Norman, Oklahoma proclaiming September 15th, 2019 through October 15th, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norman. Whereas Hispanic Heritage Week started in 1968 and was expanded to cover a 30-day period from September 15th through October 15th in 1988, and whereas the 2019 Hispanic Heritage Month national theme, Hispanic Americans: A History of Serving Our Nation invites reflection on Hispanic American service and contributions to the history of our nation, and whereas Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Nicaragua celebrate the anniversary of their independence on September 15th, and Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16th and September 18th respectively, and whereas Norman is home to people whose ancestry represents hundreds of nations, including Mexico, Spain, and the Spanish-speaking countries of Central America, South America, and the Caribbean, and whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the array of distinct and vibrant cultures that throughout the history of Norman, the State of Oklahoma, and our country have contributed to our prosperity and culture while energizing our diversity, and whereas it is necessary to increase awareness of and appreciation for the valuable and important contributions made by Hispanic Americans to our business, cultural, and education communities, now therefore I, Mayor of the City of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2019 as Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Norman and invite all citizens to join me in celebrating Hispanic culture, traditions, and achievements. I would like to recognize Marisol Faro Suarez and Sadie Herrera Oriana to the podium to accept the proclamation and to say a few words.
I am Reverend Sadie Oriana at the Iglesia Pueblo de Dios here in Norman, and on behalf of the Hispanic community of the City of Norman, I'd like to accept the proclamation.
Marisol Faro, and I'd like to accept the proclamation, and it's with our difference that we made this estate, specifically Norman, so amazing and so great. Thank you.
Thank you. And after you take that photo, will you tell us a little bit about the celebration this Saturday?
Definitely. Since 2004, we have, the Latino community in the City of Norman has gathered once a year to celebrate the Hispanic heritage, and this Saturday is going to be held at the Iglesia Pueblo de Dios on Boyd, and there are cultural performances, food from over 20 different countries, if you'd like to join us, and it's open to the community.
Thank you very much. Item seven is the Consent Docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council by unanimous consent can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items eight through 26 on the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to approve placing items eight through 26 on the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been placed. Items eight through 26 on the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
Ordinance 1920-5, rezoning property located west of 12th Avenue Southeast and three-quarter miles south of Cedar Lane Road from A1 General Agricultural District to R1 Single Family Dwelling District. Item nine, submission of the City Manager's Change Order Report. Item 10, authorization for the purchase of 51 100-foot sections of 5-inch rubber supply hose from Casco Industries in the amount of $26,265 for the fire department. Item 11, acceptance of a bid and approval of contract with Central Contracting Services in the amount of $308,235 and the associated bonds for the urban concrete pavement project FYE 2020, locations, bid one, and adoption of a project agent resolution. Item 12, acceptance of a bid and approval of contract with Precision Concrete Cutting of Oklahoma LLC in the amount of $39,900 and the associated bonds for the FYE 2020 Sidewalk Horizontal Saw Cutting Project and adoption of a project agent resolution. Item 13, declaration of surplus and/or obsolete equipment and materials and authorizing the sale or disposal thereof. Item 14, approval of a special claim submitted by Serenity Irish in the amount of $1,862.55 for damages to her vehicle when struck by a police department vehicle on August 4th, 2019. Item 15, amendment number two to the contract with Cabinist Engineering, increasing the contract amount by $185,500 for a revised contract amount of $400,800, provide additional design services for the Porter Avenue Streetscape Bond Project. Item 16, change order number one to the contract with Kirkpatrick, Forrest, Curtis, PC, and Paul Coxedge Studio, increasing the contract amount by $579 for a revised contract amount of $114,079 for the Norman Forward Central Library Public Art Project and final acceptance of the project. Item 17, final acceptance and final payment of the contract with Progressive Bike Gramps for the Bicycle Skills Park Construction Project. Item 18, amendment number one to a project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, increasing the contract amount by $94,304.60 for a revised contract amount of $974,304.60 for the construction of 24th Avenue from Lindsay Street to Alameda Street Phase One with signals and adoption of a resolution. Item 19, amendment number one to a project agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, increasing the contract amount by $65,576.20 for a revised contract amount of $1,025,576.20 for construction of 24th Avenue East Widening Project Phase Two from Alameda Street to Robinson Street and adoption of a resolution. Item 20, a Norman Utilities Authority contract with Clean Earth of Alabama Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $102,000 to provide a household hazardous waste collection event to be held, mark your calendars, November 2nd, 2019, at the Lloyd Noble Center parking lot, and Performance Bond 1920-29. Item 21, a maintenance agreement contract with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation for the traffic signal interconnect upgrade on 12th Avenue East between Alameda and Robinson and adoption of a resolution. Item 22, contract with Office Pride of Oklahoma City and Moore in the amount of $62,940 annually to provide custodial services for the parks and recreation facilities and water testing for Little Axe Community Center. Item 23, a Norman Municipal Authority contract with Cabinist Engineering in an amount not to exceed $95,700 to provide professional engineering services for the Andrews Park Skate Park Project and budget appropriation from the Norman Forward Fund balance. Item 24, a memorandum of understanding with the Oklahoma Office of Homeland Security regarding grant funds in the amount of $854,000 received from the United States Department of Homeland Security to be assigned for continued support of statewide information sharing, critical infrastructure protection, and cybersecurity projects. Item 25, resolution appropriating $51,229.92 from the Risk Management Miscellaneous Reimbursements Refunds Account to be used to repair and replace traffic signal equipment or traffic signs damaged in traffic collisions. Item 26, a resolution appropriating $6,741.91 from Miscellaneous Reimbursements Refunds Account to be used to offset funds previously allocated from the Traffic Signal Account to fund the cost of the entire video detection system necessary to accommodate the traffic changes made by the University of Oklahoma that affect the intersection of Jenkins Avenue and Felgar Street. I need a motion to approve or reject the Consent Docket.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any comments from council regarding any item on the Consent Docket?
I actually don't see Sean or Angelo, but item number 26, the Felgar Street, I don't know if anybody that's here on staff might be able to answer that tonight or not. Okay. I was really just wondering if, the way I understand it, is you already reimbursed the city for this project?
It is correct.
So we're just, okay, want to make sure that already happened.
Right. It's just going back into our camp so we can do other stuff with it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
My question is for Judd about item number 22. I believe you'd be the person to ask this to. I'm curious about this contract for $62,000 for cleaning and water testing. I know we've had a lot of problems out there, so I'm curious specifically about the water testing and if you have a breakdown of cost for that portion.
I don't think, I don't think I have that with me. I can get it for you.
I'm so sorry, I didn't ask in advance.
The, yeah, the water testing is to take two samples a day, every day.
Every day.
Yes. Seven days a week, 365 days a year.
So.
And then we report that to DEQ.
Okay. And tell me again what the problems were out there.
Well, there's, there was a well, a water, always been a water well there. We added a filtration and a chlorination system to the well, and since it's a public water supply on a well, we're required to do testing, regular testing.
Oh.
So we just test the quality of the water and report the findings, and so far everything's been fine since we put in the chlorination system.
So it's, this is something that any public facility that was on a well would have to do and not because there was a problem?
That's correct.
Okay. So $62,000, but twice a day, that's, it was just a lot. I was just wondering if there was a more equitable solution?
That's, that's the best we could find. We've done several different options trying to find people that would do that testing. A big part of the contract is for custodial services, though, for the rec centers and the, and we're adding in Little Axe and the, and the senior center also, and that's five days a week service, so that's a big part of the contract. Sorry, I don't have a breakdown for you with me tonight, but.
It's okay. I let it slip past me. I should have probably prepared you in advance for that question, but I just, I guess, want to be aware. I know that there's been a problem out there before, and I just want to be aware that if it's going to be a $62,000 yearly problem, that it might be something we come up with a better solution, but I know that some portion of that is your cleaning, obviously.
Yeah, the majority of it's for the cleaning.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Scott?
Hey, Judd. Sorry, I tried to catch you. I have just a quick question on item 23, the Andrews Park Skate Park Project. I was not here for Wednesday's meeting. I did forward an email over to James, and I think Councilmember Holman did as well. We had some input from somebody I know very well, and I was just wondering if accepting this contract amount, they haven't decided on a plan, though, or a design? This is just getting a contract with the engineering firm, correct?
That's correct. This just gets the engineer in place to do the engineering work associated with the project. American Ramp Company is in a separate contract, and they're the ones that are gathering the input on what the design of the skate park and the components of the skate park will be, and that process has just now begun.
Lovely. That was my only question. Thank you.
All right. Seeing no further comments, the motion on the floor is to approve the Consent Docket. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the motion to approve the Consent Docket passes unanimously.
All right. We have two items off consent. Item 27 is ordinance 1920-16 authorizing a special election on November 12th, 2019 to submit to voters the question of approving or rejecting ordinance 1920-16, levying and assessing a sales tax of 1/8 of 1% accounted for in the Public Transportation and Parking Fund in addition to present city and state sales tax upon the gross proceeds or gross receipts derived from sales, the 1/8 of 1% sales tax to be used to support public transit systems and other lawful purposes related to public transit to be effective on April 1st, 2020, and ending upon the successful adoption implementation of a dedicated sales tax levy sufficient to fund public bus operations in furtherance of the Regional Transportation Authority of Central Oklahoma. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on second reading, section by section.
Motion to adopt.
Second. I'd like to recognize Taylor Johnson, our new public transit coordinator, to make a presentation on the costs of our new bus transit system.
Mayor, and I will be splitting this with Catherine Walker. She'll jump in toward the end. So let me get my bearings here. Yeah, I'm just going to go through a few slides, go over what we're talking about specifically, and if you have any questions at the end, please let me know. So I had a glance last year, fiscal year 19, we had about 300,000 fixed route riders and 32,000 paratransit riders. We operate from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 115 unique stops in Norman. Some of our bus stops are served by multiple routes, five local city routes that you can see there in the graphic to your right on the slide, and one commuter route to OKC that we actually split the funding costs with OKC for. And we also provide a route to the Moore Social Security Office twice a week to allow patrons to go there to do their business that they need to, and we operate about 10 to 12 paratransit buses at peak time during the day, less sometimes during the days when we have less riders. For our fleet, we inherited about 28 vehicles from the University of Oklahoma. As you can see there, a lot of them are used. We inherited two new ones. They happened to get those buses in right before the transition occurred, and most of those vehicles have a lot of mileage on them. Average mileage is about 200,000, with the average age of the fleet about nine years. The cost of a new large bus there, you can see at the bottom, is about half a million dollars, so that'll come into play when we talk more about the ongoing capital costs that we need to address in the future. And moving into that, the budget for the public transit system that we're showing here for the operation contracts, we have about 3.1 million. We're estimating a maintenance of the fleet for $900,000, for staff $125,000, for salary and benefits, and then for capital costs such as buses, technology, accessibility, et cetera, that's at 1.2 million, and we budgeted that for this year for those startup costs, and we're just showing that because there is a need for ongoing fleet replacement, like I said. So with the revenues that we do have budgeted, we have about a $2 million grant that we can apply for and be awarded that's appropriated to the City of Norman annually, and then we have a 1.1 million Norman General Fund that's been appropriated, and that leaves about 2.2 million that we're estimating with those expenses on the previous slide that we're going to come up with for this fiscal year and beyond. So with this 1/8 sales tax, we're proposing that with the 1/4 percent expiring from the county jail tax, that we would take over about half of that, and it would generally generate about 12 cents for every hundred dollars spent in the City of Norman, and we're estimating about 2.5 million that that would bring into that fund. And as you can see here, with adding that into our revenues for the public bus system, that leaves us with a slight surplus of 300,000 based on our estimates, but as I'm sure council is aware, with budgets, that can quickly go away. So with capital investments and bus stop improvements, I'm sure that that money will be put good to use, but the numbers do line up rather well with the estimated revenues in the shortfall that we're projecting. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Catherine, and let me know when you need me to switch over.
Thank you. So the ordinance before you does impose a 1/8 percent sales tax which will be effective April 1st of 2020. That's after the county jail tax expires. Again, the goal is to not increase the sales tax upon the adoption of this tax. The sales tax would terminate only upon successful adoption and implementation of a dedicated sales tax levy sufficient to fund our public bus operations in Norman by the Regional Transit Authority of Central Oklahoma. We know they will be coming forward in the region for a sales tax at some point in the future, and we want to make sure that if it's a sales tax, it's sufficient to fund our operations. Our sales tax is an increasing additionally to cover that. This would expire to make up for that. The funds would be deposited into the Public Transportation and Parking Fund, and then they can only be used by the ordinance to fund public transit system-related expenses. Implementation will be contingent on voter approval. The election will be on November 12th. If you can get the next slide. This is the actual ballot language. It's a little long, but you have to get all that in there. It does specify that it's the 1/8 of 1%. It will be deposited into the Public Transportation and Parking Fund and to be used only for public transit systems and other related public transit purposes. And then it has that language underlined there at the end about it would end upon successful adoption implementation of a sales tax to fund our bus operations by the Regional Transit Authority of Central Oklahoma. Then you have one other item on your agenda tonight, the resolution, if I may, Mayor, I'd like to just go ahead and summarize that. This is just required anytime we are sending something to an election. We have to send official notice that's adopted by council by resolution to the election board notifying them of our intent to hold an election, and so that's what this resolution does. Again, the election will be on November 12th, 2019, and the proclamation that contains the ballot language that was on the previous slide will also be sent to the election board, so that language is what will actually be on your ballot.
Thank you. Are there any, any questions from council regarding this item? Councilmember Scott?
So I have a question about the kind of sunset. It is only, should the RTA sales tax pass and increase, is that in Norman or is that all throughout the entire RTA jurisdiction or cities?
The way it's going to go forward, it will be a regional vote.
Right.
So all of the metro area cities would have to vote on it, and it's only if all of the cities as a whole, if a majority adopt that, that proposition, that it would then be implemented. Our concern in writing this language was making sure that we didn't sunset it if what they end up bringing forward to the voters in three to five years isn't sufficient to fund our bus operations. If it is sufficient, we obviously want our sales tax to expire, and so I worked with special counsel to ACOG and to the RTA to develop this language to try and meet that concern.
Okay, and I have a follow-up question. I understand that RTA must be funded by a sales tax. Is there any way to amend that, to change the funding mechanism?
It would have to be an amendment to state legislation.
Okay.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Holman?
So my first question is along those very same lines. I know right now state law mandates that the Regional Transit Authority be funded only by sales tax, and we're putting into this shall end only upon successful adoption and implementation of a dedicated sales tax levy. Should there, say, the legislature changes drastically in the next couple of years and they change the state law and say, well, the RTA could be funded by property taxes or ad valorem or any other options that we can come up with, would passing this language specifically tie us into a sales tax? Like if they pass- language specifically tie us into a sales tax? Like, if they pass something else, would that mean this can't sunset because it's not a sales tax?
If they fund our bus operations with, let's say, an ad valorem tax, which the voters would have to vote on, that would not necessarily sunset this provision. What I would recommend if that were the case is that we'd take forward a question on the same ballot, or at the same election that sunsets this, if that ad valorem tax levy were to pass.
Would you maybe recommend that we take the sales tax part out, and just say implementation of a dedicated funding source to... Would that make it so a future council doesn't have to amend this? It could just... That was really the only thing that caught my eye as far as the ballot language. And I also have a...
I think you could make that amendment, and that would address that issue. Yes.
Okay. I do have one more question for Taylor. In regard to the vehicles?
Yes, sir.
I know these numbers are based on potentially purchasing full-size buses, just like the ones we use. Is there any consideration to maybe not... Do we have to have 26 full-size buses? Do they all come in that same size? Are there smaller versions that we could look at that would be maybe less costly on maintenance and the just outright cost of having to replace them every year?
Sure. The paratransit vehicles, the smaller vans, or cutaway vans that we call them, they're usually around 80,000 to 100,000 apiece. So that's about 12 or 13 of those vehicles. And then we also have three minivans that we operate for paratransit. So the cost of vehicle replacement for the paratransit side is significantly less. For the buses, those are... That 500,000 is a cost of a 35-foot bus. Any smaller, you get to... You can buy a 30-foot bus, but wheelchair placement and securement points kind of gets a little dicey on how many you can fit on a bus that size. So generally, when we operated at OU, we decided on 35-foot buses just to make sure we had optimal wheelchair securement placement. But we can definitely look at a lower-cost bus because they do come in 30-foot, 35, 40-foot sizes.
I have seen a lot of questions about, you know, maybe we don't need, you know, to buy that many full-size buses all the time. Maybe the usage demand doesn't always dictate that we have to have a full-size bus on the route.
And we do have some 30-foot buses already in our fleet as well. But that is the highest cost, and that's why we want to make council aware.
Okay. Thank you, Taylor. I would like to propose an amendment or a change. I'm not sure, though, Catherine, what language you might prefer as far as...
I would suggest...
Dedicated funding source, or...
Yeah. That's what I was going to suggest, striking sales tax levy, and instead including funding source, so that it would read, shall end only upon successful adoption and implementation of a dedicated funding source to fund public bus operations in Norman.
All right. Does that work? Okay. Are there any questions or discussion on the amendment from council? Yes, but before... Excuse me? Okay, seeing no council comment or questions, we'll go to public comment, which to clarify, on the second line from the bottom, it's underlined where it says, "Sales Tax Levy", it would now read, "Designated Funding Source"?
Instead of Sales Tax Levy, it would say Funding Source, so that it would read Dedicated Funding Source. Yeah.
Any public comment on the amendment?
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I want to speak in favor of the amendment because it seems to at least recognize that sales taxes are the most regressive taxes that we have, and that ideally, we would like to have a regional transportation system that isn't just funded through sales tax. So I would vote yes if I were you.
Any other public comment on the amendment? Seeing none, the amendment on the floor is to strike Sales Tax Levy and replace with Dedicated Funding Source. Council members, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast and the amendment unanimously.
All right. Thank you, council member Holman, for that suggestion. Are there any other comments from council regarding the item on the floor, which is the amended ordinance on second reading? Council member Scott?
My question is, say we put it to a vote, and the vote were to fail, what would be the consequences?
Yeah, I'm looking at Mr. Francisco, but I...
It might be a tag-team effort.
I'll throw out, we know that we're lacking 2.2 million dollars, so we would have to find that elsewhere.
Just for public transit, correct?
Correct.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director. And yes, as has been previously discussed, we would face very difficult decisions if on an ongoing basis, we were to provide the current level of public transit services without a funding source. So obviously, either public transit or some other services would have to be cut, because the general fund would be picking up that full cost of the services. So we would either cut public transit or something else, or come back and propose some other revenue source. So those difficult decisions would be ultimately made by the council.
Thank you for answering my question.
Mr. Francisco, I have a quick follow-up on that. Now, the deficit of the 2.2 million dollars wasn't just a product of bad budgeting, was it?
No, ma'am. When the University of Oklahoma first came forward to the city that they were going to get out of the public transit business, the council made the determination that they wanted to continue public transit services. So it was not a question of bad budgeting. It was not a question of poor cost of service. It was a question of, do we want to continue public transit services in Norman? And we do. It's a very vital public service.
Thank you. Council member Holman?
Another question for you, Anthony. If I recall, in 2010 or so, the council at that time, did they not completely eliminate the city's funding to CART, based on the recession?
There was a proposal to cut or eliminate the subsidy to the CART system. It was not implemented. There was a 10% cut, but it was not implemented either.
And at the time, the funding to CART was around, I think, 400, 500,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
And that's what it usually has been, but we've increased it the last several years. And now we've increased it to 1.1 million out of the general fund.
From a budgeting perspective, yes.
Right. So we've increased funding from the general fund to...
To maintain the current services.
To maintain our current services. But making it kind of a priority, I think.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, council member. Council member Scott?
Last question, really quick. So we've increased funding towards public transportation, and we obviously need to fund it. If we don't, then many of our citizens are going to suffer. Should we... Should the vote pass and all goes well, we can potentially expand some of the services? Is this correct?
If all of the projections that have been put before our council are exactly correct, and yes, there'd be about $250,000 of revenue in excess of the current needs. So some services could be expanded, some capital improvements could be made, a bus could be bought, that sort of a thing. But those decisions will ultimately be made by council.
And it wouldn't hurt the rest of our general fund?
It would not. It would not hurt the rest of the general fund.
Or other services.
No, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Francisco. Thank you, council members. Seeing no other comments or questions, I would like to recognize Catherine Walker again.
Thank you. Making this amendment to the ballot language also requires two other amendments to the ordinance. These would be in Section 6, where we're actually amending our code of ordinances. Section 8-416E states that this tax shall end only upon the successful adoption implementation of a dedicated sales tax levy, and that needs to be stricken and replaced with Dedicated Funding Source. And then again, in Section 8, same language is in that section, and we need to make the same change, where we're striking the language Sales Tax Levy and replacing with Funding Source.
Can you repeat those section numbers again, please?
It's Section 6 of the ordinance, which is amending Section 8-416 of the code, and then Section 8 of the ordinance. And these are all on the second page of the ordinance. I'm sorry, the third page.
I'll entertain a motion to make these amendments.
I move... Can the mayor make a motion?
You entertain a motion.
Entertaining your motion. Make a motion to make those changes as suggested by the city attorney.
And I'll second that.
Is there any comment or discussion regarding these proposed amendments to...
Continue.
...for... Seeing none, council members, a public comment on that additional amendment, which is similar to the first one, but throughout the ordinance? Any public comment? Seeing none. Council members, you may now cast your vote.
All votes have been...
All right. Now, back to the original proposed motion on the floor, which is to improve ordinance 1920-16 on second reading. Council member, do you have any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Are there any comments from the public? Full proposed, as amended, ordinance 1920-16?
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. So the amendments that the council just passed to this proposal, I think were good in that they recognized the regressive nature of sales taxes and tried to avoid them as much as is consistent with the basic underlying policy proposal. But unfortunately, they don't really fix the regressive nature of the actual proposal itself. And I just want to make an impression upon you just about how cynical this proposal seems from out here in the seats. Because the basic ask here tonight is that, you know, we know that our bus system isn't great, but we're going to need an extra funding source in order to keep even that alive. But at the same time, the residents of Norman recognize that there's actually $17 million in the UNP TIF fund, 13 million of which is currently unobligated, and is so accessible to the city, if we'll just quit throwing good money into the TIF. So you seem to be telling us, on the one hand, that public transportation can only be saved at a cost to be paid by poorer residents of Norman, but also, on the other hand, that the OU Foundation and other TIF developers get the first crack at current budget resources. So this is roughly analogous to a school district, say, lavishing money on its football team and allowing the ARCS programs to have a bake sale or something like this, right? I mean, there's clearly two levels of funding responsiveness here. So unfortunately, things are, as they seem in this case, regressive sales taxes already make Oklahoma one of the worst states for low-income residents. So if you actually look at regressivity of taxes, Oklahoma's in the bottom 10. The city does have a big pot of money that would actually cover all of the costs that we need to get us to the new regional transportation policy. And yet, we're not using the money we have. We're asking for new money in this particular kind of situation. Now, I understand that isn't generally how people on the dais right now are thinking about this kind of issue. But I want to commend it to you as the right way to think about this issue, because you're thinking about budget issues as a matter of plugging holes, right? So we've got high transportation costs, higher costs than we thought. So of course, we're thinking about finding money for transportation. But I want to suggest to you that that's sort of a kind of bad and even fallacious mental accounting. What really helps to remember is that, you know, we get reminded of this occasionally, but I think we forget it between the budget adoptions, that budgets are really moral documents. When a shortfall happens in a high priority area, you don't just try to shore up that shortfall. You need to think in terms of your priorities, and whether it's possible to sacrifice lesser important priorities to more important priorities. So if we're thinking about prioritizing bus spending, we should prioritize bus spending. And that's something that's up to you. Now, I know there was some discussion about whether or not sort of future councils could be held to this. But what I want to suggest to you is that if you have a dedicated fund, that's much more likely to become a maximum amount that gets spent, rather than a minimum amount that gets spent on funding. If the idea is, well, you've got a dedicated fund, and you've got yours, the people who would be proposing cuts are going to be proposing cuts down to that level every year. The only way, I think, the citizens of Norman can make the point that we prioritize spending on public transportation is to ask the city council to make it a priority, rather than make it the bake sale item. So I know that one of the responses that we're likely to get here tonight is that it's actually just more complicated than I'm making it out to seem. And my request to you, then, is do tell. If it's actually more complicated than that, you can explain away this concern. I want you to sort of have at it, right? Don't leave out any of the details. Here we are tonight. This is the last item on the budget, or on the agenda. It's still relatively early in the evening. The next one that follows is basically the same kind of issue. So we've got hours yet for y'all to explain what's going on that we're not using a big pot of money that looks open to pay for this, rather than asking for another regressive tax. So let's go ahead and have that conversation tonight, all right? Shall we? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Evan Dunn, Ward 7. So I have a couple thoughts on this. The first is, the problem was caused by OU getting out of the public transit game. New president? Possibility of mending that? I don't know. No? Okay. The second one is, just ballot language, period. I think not only is the ordinance full of necessary nuance, given the unpredictability of the world that we live in, is it possible, is it within state law for us to almost do like a footnote intentional oversimplification, and to say that, so that when the voter is reading through it, and they're mystified by the legalese, which I think is a... ought to be classified as a separate language, they can come and they can say, okay, oh, that makes sense, because this is the oversimplification. We're going to... We want to... We all want to throw in for taxes, so we're going to... or for public transportation, so we're all going to tax each other and everything that we spend. Oh, okay, I understand it. Because this line about, to the extent feasible, people are going to read that. I don't know if that's actually going to be in the ballot language, but that's the little... The nuance that people will pick up on and say, oh, see, this is council. They just want a slush fund. They want something that's mostly going to be for this, but is also going to be... There's going to be loopholes so that we can fill other deficits if needed. I think that would be really helpful, and enhance the likelihood that something like this would pass. The last thing that I'd like to say is, I think that this is an opportunity that we have to get the community to really throw in, and go from being an eighth percent sales tax... about the deficiencies in the city and what, what we could do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Husky, 3615 Chatham Court, Ward 3. I just want to make sure, since this will be recorded and presumably broadcast, this is a new tax. It cannot be covered up by saying, oh, it's gonna, it's just the same kind of thing. We're not really raising your taxes. This is a new tax. And I want to make sure that that's clear to the people involved. Okay? Supposedly, you're gonna say, people are gonna say, oh, well, you're not, taxes aren't gonna go up. It's just gonna be changed from one thing to another. And, of course, the county's gonna make sure that the whole thing is changed. But I want to make sure of that, that it's a new tax. I don't mind paying a new tax if I believe in what it's for. I just don't want you to tell me it ain't a new tax.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mary Francis, 850 Cardinal Creek Condos. I just want to get the numbers, and there are some pretty simple numbers concerning sales tax. The city, of course, doesn't get all of the sales tax that we pay. The state takes part of that. So, could I find out, and for the public's edification, how much the city currently is taking in of the sales tax on a dollar that we spend, when we spend a dollar? What is the city currently getting in the sales tax, state taking part of it? And then, I want to know if there is a yes vote, what will the sales tax become on the date that that becomes effective? And then I want to know if there is a no vote, what will the sales tax become? And then I have a second issue that I would like to discuss.
Is it related to this matter?
Yes.
Okay. You want those questions first. I don't know where exactly it is on the website, but I know that under the finance part, they have it all broken down of what our 8.75% sales tax goes towards. So, Mr. Francisco, can I invite you up? So, I'm not digging around for that. Thank you.
Currently, the all-in sales tax rate in Norman is 8.75%. 4.5% goes to the state, 4% goes to the city, which includes 1/2% that goes to the public safety sales tax, 1/2% that goes to the Norman forward sales tax, and then 1/4% goes to Cleveland County. If this were not to pass, and the proposed Cleveland County public safety sales tax were not to pass, then the all-in sales tax rate in Norman would go down to 8.5%.
And if the yes vote, then the sales tax would become...
It would stay at 8.75%, all in.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francisco.
And the other is referring to the point that was just made about the city needing more money for our bus system. And currently, as I understand it, there is an agreement that is in the works, but not agreed to yet, that the city would offer $5 million for some undefined entertainment in the TIF area. That's twice what we would annually need, I understand. And I think that is unconscionable, that we would do that, offer undefined, for undefined purposes. There are no strings attached to this, apparently. So, I am concerned about that, and I am hoping that you will be concerned about that, too. And I, the people who need this service, and it is a city service, are those who are less financially able and those who are handicapped. And that's my, I think, should be a priority for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comment? Seeing none. The motion on, or are there any final comments from council regarding this item? I'll comment that I'm excited for the timing that this happened. I know full well, we all do, that this is a sales tax. We all full well know that sales tax is regressive. This is not how we prefer to fund city services, but by the great state of Oklahoma's constitution, this is how we fund city services. I think the timing works out with an opportunity where, while it is a new tax, Norman residents won't see an increase in, from what they're currently paying now. I think it's an excellent opportunity because while it is inherently regressive, the people who benefit from public transportation are the ones that are also impacted, so, by regressive sales tax. So, I'm never comfortable with it, but this makes me feel a little more fair about this proposal because of who it's gonna benefit the most. Now, we didn't ask for the lovely gift of public transit, but we have it, and it is an opportunity. And we have an opportunity as a city to invest in ourself and to invest in our future. And it's not just the city that's looking at public transit and regional transit. It's the region, and it's the state. And so, we have a key opportunity and a perfect timing to put everything in motion where we really are thinking about Norman five years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, and not just Norman, the region. So, that's accessibility to the arts. That's accessibility to doctor's appointments. That's accessibility to jobs. That's accessibility to quality of life. And I'm very excited about this. And I'll tell you right now, this is just the beginning piece of how we're gonna improve public transit in Norman. We have plans to fully look at all of our routes and make sure that people can get to the libraries, they can get to their jobs, they can get to the Moore-Norman Technology Center, that we have a bus system that goes south of Highway 9. We're looking at all of it, and we're gonna take our time because we want to do it right. So, don't expect immediate changes. And I know that it is a priority, and I don't want to speak for all of my colleagues, but I think I can speak for a fair amount of them. We want Saturday service back. We do. Because great cities have great public transportation, and this is an opportunity for every resident to have a chance to help with that. And I know we're gonna do it right in Norman. So, I am happily going to vote yes tonight, and I encourage all of my colleagues to do the same. Councilmembers? Just kidding. Councilmember Holman?
I was gonna ask if maybe city attorney could offer some clarity on some of the comments about other funding sources and why we don't have it.
Sure. The other funding sources that were referred to are funds that have been collected as part of the University North Park Tax Increment Finance District. Of course, that's a district that was created to take a portion of the growth generated within the district to finance project costs within and around the district in what's called the project area. We are ending that early. That's moving forward. The statutory review committee's reviewed that. But the way that we've been directed to end that is to come forward with an amended project plan that caps those project costs in such a way that our budget this year sees the full benefit of those sales tax. And so, that's been the goal all along. That's what you've all budgeted based on, and that's what we're going to bring forward to you.
So, ending the UNP-TIF is going to balance our budget, is gonna basically fill the budget gap that we have.
Right.
But it does not fund, it does not give us funding for other things.
Right. If you look at your budget for this year, you all budgeted based on the assumption that the TIF sales tax increment would end effective June 30th, 2019. And your budget this year, I believe, is insufficient to fund the public transit needs that we're talking about today, the $2.5 million shortfall that we have, even with those dollars going into the general fund at a 100% level.
So, we would still need to come up with around $2 more million to fully fund this, even with ending the UNP-TIF tax diversion right now?
That's right.
Thank you, Kathryn.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Patron?
A follow-up to Kathryn. So, I think, though, our commenters were differentiating between the TIF collections that are happening, ongoing, and what's in the UNP-TIF fund balance. Can you speak to those dollars? Because I've seen in different places that we could fund it for the next five, fund CART for the next five years if we just take all of those dollars?
Sure.
Is that a possibility?
If the increment for property tax continues through the 2018 year, so, everything built through 2018, assessed in 2019, is payable by next spring, we think we'll have in TIF funds close to $17 million. What's been directed so far by a term sheet adopted by council in June is that, in an effort to end the TIF early and cooperatively, that we work with the developers to figure out what projects that are remaining should still be funded and what can be cut. And what we've ended up doing is cutting a little bit from all of the projects rather than cutting any one given project. And so, those dollars are spoken for. It does achieve a savings of around $8.5 million from what was approved by council back in 2006. And that's what enables us to end it as of June 30th, in the increment as of June 30th.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Holman?
I just want to make a few real quick comments, and that's, I have used the CART system in Norman since I was in middle school, growing up on the east side. I used to have to ride the Lindsay Street bus and then change at the university and ride, get on the Main Street bus to get to Norman High when I was in high school. My dad couldn't afford to get me a car of my own. So, I've been low and keen a lot of my life, and I understand how regressive sales tax is, and I don't like having to use sales tax for really any service. I don't like that the city is mandated by law, state law, to be reliant on sales tax. We're the only state that does that. And it makes it very difficult to fund essential services when you are basing your entire budget on how much you think consumers are going to spend every month and every year. And it pits communities against each other, fighting to lure retail, national chain stores and big-box retail, which is going away nationally. Big-box stores and national retail chains are closing by the thousands nationwide, all over the country, in cities all over the country. And we've seen communities like Norman and Moore competing with each other, seeing who can, you know, come up with the best attraction package. How can we get that company to come build their store in Norman instead of Moore, Moore instead of Norman? And I really just, I hate that we have to use sales tax in that way. I don't, I, I wish it was different, and maybe one day we can get different people in the state legislature that'll make a change. But in my time on council, in my seventh year, public transportation has been a priority to me. I know the people that use it. I've used it myself, as I mentioned before. And every year that I'm in, I'm the current chair of the Community Playing and Transportation Committee, and I've stayed on that committee every year that I've been on council because transportation and transportation infrastructure is one of the primary things that got me interested in city council to begin with. It's why I started watching city council meetings on TV, because you would see presentations for road projects or new buildings that are gonna go up. And I just always thought that was very interesting. And so, transportation and how it functions is very important to me. I've been involved with the regional transit dialogue for about a decade now, which aims to bring public transit to not just Norman, but the entire Oklahoma City metropolitan area, similar to what other cities like Dallas have with DART, where a, but the bus system in Norman is not just in Norman, that anybody in Norman could get to Edmund if they needed to, on the same system. They don't have to pay another fare. It's the same system. It includes train service, commuter train service from Norman to Edmund, with downtown OKC being the central hub. Downtown, Oklahoma City has already made significant investments in their central station to prepare for this. A seven-member board, Regional Transit Authority Board, was created just a few months ago. Our representative is Marion Hutchinson, who lives in Ward 3. And I've known him for 10 years. He's one of the, he's probably the best transit advocate I've ever met. It's thankful that we have him on our team. Former Governor Brad Henry is one of the two delegates from OKC on that board. So, there's a really bright future for public transit in the Oklahoma City area. But we were given this kind of curveball last year when the university decided they were not gonna be involved in this anymore. And it looked like a bad thing at first, like, what are we gonna do? How are we gonna make sure the people that rely on this service can continue to rely on it, that it's not gonna stop one day or not function for three months while we're making a transition? And so, at first, after I got over the shock of it, it started looking more like an opportunity because for years, we've always thought that Norman's bus system was not real efficient for the needs of our community, that a circulator system, a loop system, if you will, was not efficient for this type of community, that we needed to transition to a grid pattern, which is what most bigger cities use. The 2008 CART master plan suggested that. That's 11 years ago, you know? And slight improvements have been made, have been made along the way, but we haven't been able to make that big improvement. And I know we worked pretty well with OU with the system for years, but I always thought it'd be really nice if the city could be the one in charge so that we could make some of the changes we think are necessary to meet the needs of Norman residents outside the campus area. So, I think this has been a really good opportunity, actually, that the university decided not to be involved with CART anymore. And although our staff will tell you that this is really unheard of nationwide, a existing transit system transferring service from one operator to another, our city staff had a really hard time finding out even what to do, how to do it. Even the federal government was not entirely sure, from what I understand, about what to do in that regard. And it was very complicated because, again, we get $2 million plus in federal funding a year, so lots of strings attached. And so, for the last year, this city council, the city staff, has been working really hard to try to make sure this current system, as imperfect as it is, continues running seamlessly, as seamlessly as we can. We know there have been problems. I would mention that there are several people that wanted to be here tonight that could not be here because the paratransit service, I don't know if necessarily paratransit service, but there, the CART access could not get them, could not pick them up. So, they couldn't be here tonight, but they wanted everybody to know that they wish they could be here. So, there's some imperfections in our system, but we've been working to try to make sure that it doesn't stop service. And we know it needs to be improved, but our focus has just been, how can we make sure that the current system is still going? And once we get that figured out, then we can start figuring out how are we going to expand service and improve the existing system that we have. So, this isn't the route that I would have envisioned, but I think this is a pretty good way for us to fill the gap until there is a regional solution, which I don't think is very far off in the horizon here. And so, I'm gonna support this tonight. I encourage my colleagues to do the same. And should this be put forward to a vote, I'm gonna do everything I absolutely can to get this to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Patron?
Okay. So, I guess what I'm hearing from some people in the community, and especially seeing comments online, are trying to couple the UNP-TIF and CART service. And I guess where I would want to go with that is, I hear, if you all think back, there were plenty of people in the community who would say... seeing comments online, are trying to couple the UNP TIF and CART service. And I guess where I would want to go with that is, I hear, if you all think back, there were plenty of people in the community who would say, you know, the OU Foundation was holding the senior center hostage. Do you, people remember that argument and conversation? What I'm not willing to do is hold the members of this community who ride CART and need those city services desperately in their life, I'm not willing to hold them hostage over the UNP TIF. And so I would encourage the people who are making these arguments online and in here to think about that long and hard, because in my opinion, it's very poor form. So I'm just going to leave it at that as far as the moral side of it. But I will say that the UNP TIF is going to see its day in here. We will be looking at it again, and I happen to agree with Mary Frances over here, that spending $5 million on just whatever you might want to do that's fun for people to do, that's not exactly what this council should be doing. So, but it's a different conversation, and we don't have to couple everything with the UNP, and as passionate as I even am about that. So I just really hope that people will consider other members of the community. If you don't use CART, fine. Hopefully you do one day, because guess what? This goes with RF 100, too. We need people to use public transit. And I hope I get to use it as well. I think we all should have expanded public transit service, and that it does work on a grid, and that we're all using these services and putting less pollutants in the air. So I'm very excited to be headed down that road of more public transportation. And I'm also excited to have the UNP TIF conversation down the road. But that's not tonight. And tonight, it's about all of us coming together and helping one another to have the rides to go where we need to go, and live our lives, and have opportunity. That's what this is about. So I'm excited about it, and that's what I really wanted to say about that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Wilson?
Okay. This is a big convoluted box. As Councilmember Petron stated, these are two separate issues. I understand the sentiment. I understand the regressiveness of sales tax, and we are unfortunately, as Mayor Clark said, put in a position, and other members up here, that we are put in a position to run our city on a very regressive and unreliable revenue stream. And I am not willing to hold, hostage our public transit to get what we want in the TIF. I have been very vocal with trying to extricate ourselves from all the development agreements and all of the murky waters of that situation, and pushed for efforts in our charter review committee to not get ourselves in that position again. So, you know, that's kind of where I'm at. I feel like I've, I've put my money where my mouth is on that deal. I also, so let's back up 10, 12 years ago, I made a decision to quit my job that was a six-figure job, because I was tired of driving every day to the city. So a regional transit, if we can set ourselves up for a nice regional transit in the future, it diversifies our opportunities in the work, in labor and job market. So that actually is an economic development opportunity for us, that I've said all along, that I thought that Norman just needs more jobs, not retail jobs, not arena jobs, not, you know, more Reese's. We don't want to, you know, we need jobs that pay well. And sometimes that means we have to go to Oklahoma City or Midwest City, Tinker, you know, or even, I don't know what else is out there, but I know there's oilfield jobs and all kinds of stuff in the Yukon area, that people in Norman could participate in more fully if they didn't have to drive, you know, or if they could, well, for me, I was getting my master's degree, and I was like, if I could just study while I'm driving, but, you know, law enforcement frowns on that. So, you know, so I, I will support this. And I will vocally ask my constituents and my friends and neighbors to pass this tax, because I believe in, in community transportation, public transportation. And I believe that, I got the email as well, that said somebody couldn't make it here tonight because of issues with public transit. So I feel like that as a community, it's our responsibility to do that. I don't really see another way to do that, other than I think this was a nice little opportunity for us to become flush. So I will support this tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Bierman?
Someone else who quit her job because she didn't want to drive to Oklahoma City anymore. I did it for 10 years. I didn't want to do it again. I also represent some of the poorest census tracts in the whole city, and public transit doesn't reach them right now. I walked the longest route in my ward that someone has to walk to get to a cart stop. It's 1.2 miles. It is uphill. And she just said both ways. Got a jokester down there. And frankly, I couldn't imagine doing that if I was physically limited in any way, or had a child or two, or had armfuls of groceries. And so you all know how I feel about the UNP TIF. Everyone up here has their own calculus for that. I respect everyone's opinion and decision and their thought process on it. You all know mine. And I am not only going to vocally support this, but I am going to push for the increases that we need. We do need to restore Saturday service. We need CART stops that actually go all the way to our east side library, and that no one on the east side needs to walk almost a mile and a half from their home to reach the nearest CART stop. So I'm going to be there the next time we, you know, go toe-to-toe in the ropes over the UNP TIF, and you all know what side I'm going to be on. So that's why I'm going to support this tonight. And every opportunity that I have, you're going to see me talk about how important it is that we pass this in November. And so we can talk about how or if this overlaps with the UNP TIF, but when it comes time to vote on this, regardless of where the UNP TIF is, that's where I'm going to be. And I'm going to be voting for it, and I'm going to be encouraging each and every one of you to do so as well, because we do have things to fight about elsewhere. But on the Venn diagram, those two things do not overlap for me. They don't. Because the people in my ward who need public transit, they may or may not care what happens with the UNP TIF, but they, I almost said something I wasn't supposed to say, but they really, really do care about what happens with public transit. And so I'm going to keep those two things siloed. You all know how my moral judgment is going to land me on each of those, and that's all I have to say on it.
Thank you, Councilmember. The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on second reading as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon second reading as amended passes unanimously.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the ordinance on final reading as amended.
So moved.
Second.
The motion on the floor is to adopt the ordinance on final reading as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the ordinance upon final reading as amended passes unanimously.
Secretary of the Cleveland County Election Board notice of a special election to be held on November 12, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
This is a companion item to the previous ordinance, but are there any further public comments? Seeing none, are there any further comments from council regarding this item? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is to, ooh, she snuck in there. Councilmember Scott?
I had a request. My husband said that he used CART and his skateboard for over a year, and in the wintertime, he wouldn't have made it to class. And my husband's an engineer, civil engineer. We both actually used CART in our undergrad when I lived on the southeast side of town. I used it to get to class. And so I'm very grateful for public transportation. And I'll echo that every thriving community does have public transportation. And like was said earlier this evening, people couldn't make it here tonight because the CART services couldn't pick them up. It's an issue. Public transportation is critical. It's a service. The paratransit needs to be, this all needs to be funded, and it's totally separate than some of the issues that have been brought forward tonight, that are, again, totally separate issues. Not everything needs to be, they're not, they don't have to all be lumped in together. It's not all connected. CART has been around a lot longer than the UNP TIF. We're ending the UNP TIF. And I'm grateful. I'm grateful for that. And I'm grateful to be funding CART and public transportation. And I'm looking forward to hopefully having an alternate funding mechanism outside of sales tax for the RTA someday. We can work on that. And that's all I have to say.
All right. One final note from me. We're all going to have to train ourselves to stop calling it CART. That's right. Nimbark. I don't know. NART? Yeah, we, I don't know. Not CART. Goodbye, CART. Goodbye. All right. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution unanimously.
All right. Item 29, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the city council. Remarks should be directed to the city council as a whole, unlimited to three minutes or less.
Mary Frances, 850 Cardinal Creek. I really appreciate this new council and the comments that were made tonight. I especially appreciated the comments made by my council member, which he has the history of this whole city, and particularly transportation. Transportation is a really important thing to me. I have been part of a volunteer group that go down and open up the Norman Depot at night, so that Amtrak passengers can have a place to get out of the hailstorm or whatever is happening, while they wait for their ride or whatever. And I am hoping that we can get a connection between our bus system and the commuter rail, and get the Amtrak up to Tulsa, for pity's sake. Connect the two major cities of this state. Evan Stare has just really been absolutely marvelous on this for the last 15 or 16 years now. And we, we just need to get our act together. Transportation is, is a major, major benefit for all the citizens. And once you get that Amtrak or rail and commuter rail going, people are more likely to utilize the other services, the bus and that. So I, I really appreciate the discussion tonight. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Steve Ellis, 633 Reed Avenue. I wasn't surprised by the result tonight about the sales tax item, but I want to say that I was completely right about how cynical it actually is. Because instead of saying why we're paying out a bunch of money for relatively low priorities, thereby leaving nothing left for public transportation, we got a story about how we have to raise regressive taxes because we already plan to pay out money to these low priorities. I think it's very clear that we're not prioritizing public transportation here. And when it comes to thinking about issues like who's taking what hostage, it's the council's position that if there isn't any more money raised, then public transportation is going to go unfunded. I mean, that's what everybody is saying tonight. That's what's taking public transit hostage. Remember, budgets are about priorities, and prioritizing means not keeping things in silos, but deciding what you most want to spend money on. So there are inherent linkages when you're dealing with a limited budget, and you have to make decisions about whether or not raising regressive taxes is desirable when you've got some other money that you can spend on stuff. That leads me to my second point, which is that it's unclear to me what residents of Norman are supposed to think about the upcoming TIF process. It seems pretty clear that members of city council have completely made up their mind about what's going to happen on the TIF. Everybody knows where we're going to be on this. And it seems, then, that like we're really just going through the motions with this final statutory review committee meeting, the planning commission, the two public hearings. I mean, if it were a relevant decision, that would be something you would have to think about tonight, because it would be a consideration that you would raise about what a better plan would be for the TIF, why am I blanking on the name, the TIF proposed project plan. So I think it's fairly clear that while there may be some difference of opinion on the council, everybody is resigned to what the hell is going to go on. And that's precisely why we're going to have to have a tax increase, because there seems to be a majority on the council who's willing to spend the money on something else. Remember, budgets are moral documents, and what you're doing when you're deciding how to spend is prioritizing, and that requires comparison. Siloing is a mistake here.
Ward seven. That dude right there has coached the national champions in debate. He's a philosophy professor. I think irrespective of his criticisms, I think this community, all owes those two people a round of applause or something, because they devote so much of their time to enhancing our understanding about the intricacies of these issues. And Dr. Rogers, Dr. Ellis, thank you. The fact that you are some of the only professors from this esteemed institution who come and add your input, I mean, that's what a research university is going to do, though. You know, we don't have an education university. We don't have a system by which we export the enlightened minds that this, the universe that's captured in a city can cultivate. But that's another issue. Mayor, will you give me a one-minute warning? The past two weeks have just been incredible. Beto was here. I, I influenced him. Immediately after he got out of his van, I reached over to him and started talking to him about oil. Started talking. I didn't even introduce myself. He said, "Beto." I said, "Mr. Congressman." Cory Booker was here. Oh, my God. If, if you weren't there in the audience, he told this story about Dr. King getting assassinated, and how when the Lorraine Motel was turned into a museum on the very spot that he, that he was slain on, they have re-inscribed this, this biblical scripture quote. It says, "Here comes the dreamer. Let us slay him and see what happens. See what becomes of the dream." Oh, that motivated me to keep dreaming. And it was reinforced when I saw this movie, and I encourage everyone to see it, because it's made by the genius Terry Gillum from Monty Python and 12 Monkeys and Brazil. He is truly one of the, he and Adam Curtis and James Howard Kuntzler are three of the geniuses that have inspired me. But The Man Who Killed Don Quixote, watch it. I feel like I'm him. Thank you.
Good evening. Cindy Rogers, Ward Four. Yay, new Ward Four person. I appreciate that this council inherited the current TIF plan that we have. And I also appreciate that the pressure that that has put on the budget with the millions of dollars that have been siphoned each year, that you that you couldn't spend on our priorities. But I will say that is, this council's, it is on you to change the plan and figure out how to fix the budget and move forward in a way that does, that is sensitive to our priorities. It's one thing to say we have priorities and we really wanna beef up our sale, our, our transit, which I absolutely do because that's our future, and that's what can make Norman special. Um, but as a card-carrying PhD economist, I can, I'm absolutely one hundred percent certain that the plan, that you guys are, the terms, make things worse and actually are the opposite of what we need to be doing. So, uh, we don't have a chalkboard, so I'm gonna do some simple math and hold up my handwritten signs. So the simple math is, there's twenty-five million in authorization. Since we tend to wanna talk about authorizations, I'll talk about that. Um, we think we'll have seventeen million authorized, which means there would be eighteen million short if we stopped the, well, we've stopped the increment. Okay? So that's an eight million dollar shortfall. So how do we come up with that? My simple plan, the cultural facility is eight point seven five million dollars of authorization. We are gonna spend twenty-two point five million dollars in Norman Forward Funds, which is more than eight point seven five million, right? That's pretty simple math. Ah, but now you say, "But we have to pay for two million dollars more for land costs, and we thought in the Norman Forward Budget, so it will run short." Where are we gonna come up with that? Well, here you go. We are already planning on taking out some money from economic development 'cause any DC's plans, well, we've given up on the commercial development stuff. That would leave us two point six million dollars. All right, so what would that do for us? That would end the TIF diversion, sorry. So we wouldn't have to give, we wouldn't have to give up the reimbursement that developers would owe us if they don't build the Lifestyle Center. We wouldn't have to remove their incentive to build the Lifestyle Center. We wouldn't have to add five million in incentives for them to put in entertainment. That may or may not be a regional draw. That will probably be cannibalization. We, we don't have to add five million.
Tom Fightmaster, uh, five sixteen Hanging Elm Drive, Ward six. This is a little on the lighter side of things tonight. Uh, my wife and I went to dinner after she had a procedure on her knee at the doctor's office today, and we didn't get a straw, so we asked for one. That's the straw. And if I may, I brought this to Mayor Clark. Yes? If I may. I may? This was a little restaurant at eighty-ninth and Penn, eighty-ninth and Western in Oklahoma City. Um, it's called Sunnyside. Uh, anyway, it's a cute little, little thing. Um, so we, I decided to bring it. Uh, while we were sitting there, a younger couple, uh, was talking about, uh, they didn't like the paper straws. They wanted the plastic straws back. And Diana and I proceeded to tell them how we grew up on paper straws. There weren't any plastic straws back then. So that's, uh, that's the way to lighten the evening up.
All righty. Hello, everyone, and happy Tuesday. Today is the tenth of September, which means we are coming up on, what is this, the eighteenth year tomorrow of nine eleven. Um, so I'd like to extend my condolences to all the families that lost loved ones, all of those who were lost in the, um, incident. I remember where I was when I was six years old, um, in a restaurant with my family, watching the news and devastated because I thought my uncle had died on the airplane, on one of the airplanes. Uh, because I was six and I didn't quite understand where he was flying to or from, but it didn't matter to me. All I knew was my uncle was in the air, and it could've been him. Could've been one of mine. So, um, we all have, you know, our feelings about that, and I just wanted to recognize that while we have very passionate issues that we debate in this chamber, there are other things going on outside of us, outside of Norman, Oklahoma. Um, and I think that we should be cognizant of that. And sometimes our issues are really so small in the grand scheme of things. So moving on, very excited about funding public transportation in our city adequately and being able to restore Saturday service and being able to, um, expand services, hopefully, should this pass. So fun, I'm gonna do, I guess, a little bit of what Kate, or what Councilmember Bierman does is, I guess, welcome to my TED Talk, um, about sales tax. Um, I don't like it. And when I was a teacher, I knocked doors. The very first time I knocked doors was for a penny sales tax for State Question seven seven nine. And I was a teacher waiting tables. I used to, uh, work just down the street and more. And I also worked back down the street at Pub W when I was, um, teaching and so knocking doors in my spare time, um, for asking my neighbors for a raise. And at the time, a sales tax is all that they were considering. Um, and it ultimately failed, and at the time, I was agitated. But I wasn't agitated with my neighbors or with my peers. I was agitated with the legislature and them not raising the GPT, the Gross Production Tax, on, um, oil and gas primarily, and instead having these people be beholden to these special interests that ultimately harm not only our citizens, our pocketbooks, and our air, land, and water. Um, but that's why I sit before you here today, is because of that agitation um, with legislators who told me that I shouldn't be criticizing them, but I should be thanking them. And I said, "For what exactly?" Um, I'm the one asking for a raise for my neigh, for my neighbors. Anyway, so I don't like sales tax. Um, ultimately, I, I have my Masters of Public Administration, and my concentration was on nonprofit management, which really prepares people for a career in government or nonprofit, what have you. And, um, here I am. I'll call this my career, although I don't get paid very much for it. I just derive great joy, uh, sometimes from politics. So, and public service is really what I derive great joy from, is public service. Um, it's, you get both things, right? You get lots of criticism, and you also get people calling you and thanking you, and that's wonderful. Um, and while I studied nonprofit management, a large, large, a lot of my time went to actually studying budgets, the Oklahoma, the state of Oklahoma budget, the city budget, um, and alternate funding sources to our budget. Um, I studied a municipal income tax, and that's something that I brought forward on the Finance Committee before and was met, um, with, um, not, uh, what I would call an agreeable mindset about it. And I know that we are, you know, in the city, in all municipalities in Oklahoma are dependent upon sales tax. I just want us to consider, since Norman is progressive, and income tax is more progressive, a municipal income tax is something that we could do. And this is something that you'll probably hear more from me about, 'cause I am on the Finance Committee, and I'm just gonna continue annoying everybody on this dais until something happens. Because we wouldn't have so many issues if we had a more stable funding source, right? Sales tax is extremely volatile, and this is another reason. It is, it's regressive and it's volatile. We can't depend upon it, um, very well. I mean, we're getting the job done, but we've been having to make cuts rather than expand services. And income tax is more progressive because sales tax takes dollars, takes money out of the pockets of people who need that money the most, when they're buying groceries and they're buying goods and services. However, like we have acknowledged, we must fund our services at this time using a sales tax. And so I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that, and I hope we can change that. Um, as far as the, so I encourage everyone who's watching at home to please vote in favor of the, um, the quarter cent for the city, at least. The quarter cent for the city. The county can do their own thing, but we, uh, would like to keep our, our funding. Um, I would like to encourage everyone to vote in favor of public transit and maintaining those services and providing expanded services. Um, as far as the University North Park TIF, that's coming up. We're gonna end the TIF. This is something that we've been getting a lot of public feedback from. You know, it doesn't look the way that anybody wants it to look. I'm sure the developers would love to keep it going as long as possible. And I know that people in this room wanna end it. I wanna end it. I'm ready to be done with it. It doesn't look the way we want it to, but it's gonna be done. It will get done. Um, there are other issues moving forward. I was on the phone with a lady yesterday about the indoor aquatic center, and people wanna get these projects done, and they want projects for their family. We're still waiting on the aquatic center. We're still waiting on the multi-sport center, the senior center. We have a lot of things on our plate, and we're trying to do all of these things. And I don't want to get too wrapped up in one issue. I don't want any issue, I don't want any service hijacked by one issue. And I'm not going to be able to focus all of my time on one thing when we have so many services and so many issues and so many protections that we need to provide to our citizens. We're still lacking stormwater, still. Uh, we still need to be providing clean water. And on going, now that we're getting into water in my TED Talk, um, the end of this month, it'll be Sunday, Ward eight. Um, our Ward eight council, I'm sorry, our Ward eight meeting will be Sunday, September twenty-ninth. I'm looking for my calendar. I know I'm right, though. I know I'm right. Okay. September twenty-ninth, from one-thirty to three at Fire Station Seven. I, it's going to be environmentally focused. We're going to have members of the Sierra Club speak to us about renew RF one hundred. That's the Ready for One Hundred Initiative that this council passed last year. Um, a commitment to one hundred percent renewable energy. Another thing that we're discussing is the ONG, OGN E franchise agreement. We have a ton of stuff on our plate, y'all. We're trying to get it done, and we're trying to do this the best way we possibly can. One hundred percent renewable energy. You see what I did there? Um, so I'm also inviting our very own Ward eight, uh, member and chair of the ECAB Environmental Citizens, what does ECAB stand for? Environmental Citizens, Control Advisory Board, Citizens Advisory Board. Amanda Neeran will be speaking with us, as well as our beautiful mayor about the RTA. She has been allotted forty-five minutes. She wanted the entire period for Q and A. She's been allotted forty-five minutes, so. I will bestow this time upon you.
I'm gonna let Stephen tell his story.
Okay. And, uh, so just a friendly reminder, Sunday, September twenty-ninth, from one-thirty to three PM at Fire Station Seven, we will have speakers for the, um, Renewable RF One Hundred Initiative, ECAB, as well as the, uh, our public transit. It's not the RTA. It's the, uh, the regional transit, but we're talking about the sales tax, the sales tax renewal um, for our public transit system. And I believe public transit is more environmentally friendly, and this actually is within our, um, theme of environmentalism. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for staying here. Thank you.
Um, I would also like to extend a thank you to, um, colleagues here for, uh, for the council voting to unanimously approve, uh, this proposal. Um, again, I don't have to say anymore about how important I think public transit is, and we can do better. So, um, I just have a couple of things pertinent to Ward seven. Um, finally, after a couple of years, we got a couple of voter-approved infrastructure projects that are pretty important to the Hardy-Rucker neighborhood. Shared this information on the Facebook pages and stuff, but George McKinley Street are some of the worst-conditioned streets, neighborhood streets in Norman, Evan knows. Um, and a couple of years ago, uh, Norman voters, uh, voted to extend the five-year road maintenance bond, uh, which is a funding mechanism the city has. Uh, basically, every five years, voters, um, going back several years, um, have consistently voted to re-authorize a, what is called a road maintenance bond. It allows the city to go in and basically rebuild neighborhood streets primarily. Um, we do the big voter-approved bond packages, like we did last April, to go in and widen big main roads and things like that. But this five-year road maintenance bond is primarily for smaller streets, neighborhood streets. Um, and it's been very effective in Norman, um, over the years. I think city staff would be willing to provide, uh, some information and data on how, how great that program has been. And in the case of this neighborhood in Ward seven, we're gonna get a couple new streets, um, uh, some streets that are over fifty years old, I think, is the last time they've been improved, so. Uh, exciting news for Ward seven there. Um, also, I did want to, um, mention, uh, I did have the opportunity to go to the meet and greet, uh, a couple of weeks ago for Senator Cory Booker. Um, I'm pretty interested in any presidential candidate that's willing to come to Norman, Oklahoma. Um, and so any of them that are coming, you can assure that I will be there, um, pretty regardless of what their party is. Um, this year so far, I've had the opportunity to speak with three United States senators about, uh, federal cannabis law reform, specifically in regard to banking, payment processing, and criminal justice reform, specifically, um, expunging records of people that have been convicted of cannabis-related crimes and trying to get people out of jail that have been put there due to cannabis-related crimes, which are now legal. So, um, thankful for that opportunity. Um, I'm not sure if he's my frontrunner, who I'm gonna vote for yet, but, um, regardless of your political persuasion, um, there is a pretty good documentary about Cory Booker. Uh, he was originally a city councilman in Newark, New Jersey. Um, it's Newark, New Jersey. If you don't know much about it, it's a pretty large city. Um, significant crime, poverty issues. And there's a documentary where I first heard about him, way before he ran for US Senate, um, called Street Fight. Um, it's on free on, uh, Amazon Prime right now. Um, and it's about when he, as a council member, a first-term council member, ran against the longtime incumbent mayor, um, a guy named Sharp James. Now, if that's not a political name, uh, for the ages. Uh, but this was a very entrenched incumbent. They were both Democrats, running against each other. And it's about an eighty-minute-long documentary, but it's one of the things that got me really interested kind of in maybe running for office, was just, uh, seeing how intense that was. And so that's what got me, uh, hearing about, uh, this guy named Cory Booker, and then he ran for Senate and won, and so on. But, um, but it's a very good documentary if you're interested in all municipal politics, especially in a city like that. Um, it's, it's a very good, uh, one to check out. Um, so looking forward to what other, I've heard some other candidates might be coming to Norman soon, so I'm looking forward to that. Um, outside of that, I just, uh, wanna thank you all for coming here tonight. I'm gonna be probably having a ward meeting in either the third, uh, middle of October is what I'm thinking, to discuss the, uh, sales tax proposal for public transit, um, to discuss, um, some other big issues we have going on in Norman and, uh, some of the Norman Forward projects, the Reeves Park Project, which is in Ward seven. I've gotten a lot of questions about what we might be doing there. And so, um, I'll be posting more about that as it's coming up. And then the last thing I do wanna mention is, um, on the twenty-sixth of this month, Thursday at four PM, um, it's Community Planning and Transportation Committee. I think we're gonna be talking about cannabis zoning and, uh, potentially, um, some options in regard to a new state law that authorizes the city to, to basically ticket railroads when they block, uh, crossings for longer than ten minutes. Uh, we're trying to figure out, at least from my standpoint, what that actually means. Uh, what authority does the city have? There is one crossing in Ward seven at Post Oak Road that is a real serious problem. Um, there's an entire neighborhood that cannot get out or in their neighborhood when the train stops, and it happens very often, and sometimes for hours at a time, hours. Um, and it's not always for an emergency. We know that for sure. So we don't know what's going on, but we do have a lot of residents that have been concerned about it for a long time. And with this new state law, I'm interested to know what can we do? I mean, uh, riding tickets, I think, is the last option. I would prefer that we work out some sort of agreement that maybe they don't block that crossing, uh, since it's the only one that's like that. So I look forward to that. Everybody's invited, and we'll see you then. Thank you.
I wanna join the bandwagon of announcing a, uh, ward meeting. It seems to be a common thread so far. I'll keep it common. Ward six will have a meeting on October the seventh at seven o'clock at the Twelfth Avenue Rec Center. Ward Six will have a meeting on October the seventh at seven o'clock at the Twelfth Avenue Rec Center. Anybody's welcome. Sean O'Leary will talk about the transit tax business and all that goes with it. We'll talk about other things, I'm sure. October seventh, seven o'clock, Twelfth Avenue Rec Center. I've been studying as as we've gone through this, this uh transit business over the past few weeks. I was new to it and I thought I'd studied a lot. But I learned more in the five-minute soliloquy that my friend here gave in terms of the history of rapid transit around here than I think I have in the last four weeks. And I really appreciate that. Uh I think we did the right thing tonight. Uh I look forward to improvements as we all do. Councilmember Scott, you hit me where I live because eighteen years ago tomorrow morning, I was at the Pentagon. I was there when the airplane hit. I had a friend who was on the opposite side of the building. Fortunately, I was on the side away from where the airplane hit. But I had a very dear friend who fortunately got out, but we didn't know for hours and hours. I saw the absolute worst that humanity can do to one another on that day. But I also saw some of the best in terms of the first responders, the police, the fire, some volunteer military people, civilians, whomever, people helping people. It really moves my heart. It moves my heart to this day. If I have an affinity for first responders, I take it back to that day. And and my hat is off to anyone that puts themselves in harm's way as they do. A- a- as a footnote to this, you you may or may not realize it, but this Saturday is the hundredth anniversary of the Norman Police Department. And this year is the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Norman Fire Department. My hat's off to all of those folks. Happy anniversary to both. And thank you for being there for me.
I am welcome, Lee. Uh and I'd like to count the women. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Nine women sitting up here. So y'all be careful. Um watch out, we're gonna drive y'all off the road. Um I wanted to say I'm having a ward meeting. I have a ward meeting every month. Um this this month's ward meeting will be this Saturday. It's every second Saturday of the month. I I did take the summer off, though, I was I was slacking. Um and this one will be at uh Thunderbird Baptist Church, which is across Highway Nine, south side of Highway Nine from Clear Bay entrance to Lake Thunderbird. And in case you aren't familiar with my ward, I have to do these at different churches every month because there's a giant lake in the middle of it and people don't want to drive around it. So uh this, the south side of the lake, folks, we're doing it at Thunderbird Baptist Church at ten thirty on Saturday. I like to keep it to about an hour, hour and a half. Um any city officials that want to come are welcome to come and chat. Uh I just like to be there, available for comment. So people know where they can find me. We're just a ginormous ward, so I want to just always be available. So I hope to see y'all there.
First of all, I would like to thank uh the members of the Selection Committee for Ward Four for volunteering to serve um and give their time. Uh Greg Youngman was the Chair of the Committee, George Amati, Andy Rieger, Lynta Westner, who's here in the back and a former council member, and Emily Wilkens. Um I'd also like to personally thank the committee and the council for uh their vote of confidence in me. As most of you know, Ward Four residents are engaged and passionate as demonstrated by the number of applicants who are interested in serving our ward and our city. And I would like to encourage each of them to stay involved and make a difference for Ward Four and for the city of Norman. I've spent the last few years being laser-focused on the unique opportunities and challenges that um Ward Four is regularly confronted with that generally fall under the following categories. Zoning, planning, land use, historic preservation, stormwater and infrastructure, affordable housing and homelessness, and building strong neighborhood alliances. Um my intention going forward is to be a strong voice and advocate for those that live, work and play in the heart of Norman while being acutely aware of my responsibility as a council member to be well-informed about the complex issues that we face and that our community faces as a whole. And I'm ready to go to work for the city that has been home to me for forty-eight years. So thank you for the opportunity. I'd also like to announce a ward meeting. I'm gonna have my first Ward Four meeting on Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, from seven to eight thirty PM. Um it's going to be at the Norman Central Library in Rooms A and B. Um I would love to see as many residents of Ward Four um come out. It's an opportunity for me to get to meet more of you and for you to share with me uh what your concerns are uh for Ward Four going forward. Um also like to make sure that everybody takes some time this weekend to attend two major events in historic downtown Norman. The Second Friday Art Walk is on Friday, September thirteenth from six to nine. And the Norman Film Fest is this weekend, Friday, September thirteenth and Saturday, September fourteenth. And if you're interested in the very extensive schedule and locations, you can visit normanfilmfest.com. I hope you all have a great evening.
So I'm very excited to have Lee on council. How exciting is this? I have um it's gonna be fun up here. Um so a few things, um I received, as the rest of council did as well, um emails from David Beck and Betty Mafucci as well as some others um regarding the senior center. And I want to reiterate now with council how important it is um that we reach out to the seniors in this community on the senior center. And this is what uh David Beck and Ms. Mafucci as well were talking about. So I want to put that um charge back to us as we spoke about at the retreat and send a letter out. Uh sending them to a questionnaire, but importantly, letting them know how important they are to us and letting them know about CART and things like this. It's a great time to reach out to them. So clock's ticking because as uh Mr. Beck even brought up in his letter, reaching out to them has got to happen quickly. So, because it's a ninety-day contract from my understanding, which I think you all should read that email from him again as an architect. It was kind of eye-opening. Um let's see, the next thing, uh we just got finished with our floodplain meetings in Ward Three and Eight. So we will be moving on to all of Ward Three meeting. And I'm setting that up with the city manager and I'm hoping to have it in a new location that Ward Three hasn't had one before. And if we can get that worked out, then we'll keep it under wraps for now. But that will be in October for a full ward meeting. Um let's see. Oh, I would like to encourage City Legal to um maybe put out a memo that is uh available for the whole public that can explain what the lawsuit challenges as you believe them to be uh are with the UMP TIF. What are the claims that the UMP TIF developers are proposing um as you remember them? That would be helpful if we could get that out so that that is no longer plaguing our Facebook pages. And let's see. Again, I'm just really grateful for Lee and for the rest of my colleagues up here. You guys are pretty awesome. Thank you.
Okay, you guys ready? Because I'm so ready. I'm so excited for this. So today, I had a meeting with our seemingly tireless city manager. Um as a side note, I don't know where he gets his body fuel, but I want it because that man has more energy than I could ever hope to have. I don't know how he sleeps. However, so I had a meeting with him today as well as one of the lead organizers for an organization here in Norman called Churches Caring for Creation because they wanted to talk to me, again, we had a conversation last year, about Styrofoam. So, a few facts about Styrofoam for you. Styrofoam does not biodegrade. It can last in the environment in a landfill for five hundred-plus years. It can photo degrade, however, but that just breaks it down into even smaller particles that animals eat. They can choke on it. It can clog up their digestive systems. It is considered one of the toughest single-use products to clear out of the environment. Eighty percent la- end up in landfills and could account for up to thirty percent of the world's landfills are with Styrofoam. Twenty percent, though, end up in the waterways. And in Oklahoma, I can imagine that that number is probably higher than that considering our wind and how light Styrofoam is. So, however, Styrofoam is recyclable. And up until, I'd say, late twenty seventeen, Goodwill here in Norman accepted Styrofoam for recycling. At the end of twenty seventeen, they decided to no longer accept Styrofoam for recycling. So Churches Caring for Creation decided that they wanted to take up this challenge. So um in last January, I met with them to kind of talk about this and kind of see where the city might be able to line up with them and working on this. Um because there is a company called Dart Corporation. I'm sure you guys have heard of it. They used to be called Solo. I'm sure you all have seen the red cups. Uh if you have any plastic lid on any beverage that you've had, that lid right there, probably made by Dart. Dart also recycles Styrofoam. They take it, they compress it, and then they poof, expand it back up again in whatever chemical process they use uh to make other parts out of Styrofoam. They make lightweight airplane components and motorhome parts and picture frames and the railings on cruise ships, anything that needs to be made light. They make it out of Styrofoam. And they collect Styrofoam for recycling in Ada. And they have a drop-off center in Ada. So, three churches are actively recycling Styrofoam in their churches, uh University Lutheran Church, St. Michael's Episcopal Church and First Christian. Since April, they have collected and transported to Ada two hundred and twenty-nine thirty-three-gallon bags full of Styrofoam. And that includes rinsing it, stacking all the Sonic Cups and getting as many into those thirty-three-gallon bags as possible. So, we're talking now about setting up a way for Norman residents to recycle sty- Styrofoam. We are going to have it available to be delivered to the hazardous waste event on November second that we just approved tonight. So starting now, start collecting your Styrofoam, separate the packing Styrofoam from the food Styrofoam. And you'll be able to bring it to the hazardous waste event where the churches, from Churches Caring for Creation, are going to volunteer to sort it and then figure out some way to fund the transport down to Ada. They agreed to transport it. We might try and figure out a way to do it ourselves because in the meantime, we're going to take one or two of our uh big dumpsters that can really no longer be picked up by the big trash trucks. Um and we're going to repurpose them into Styrofoam drop-off centers. And we're gonna figure out a couple locations to put them. And we're gonna figure out the logistics. And our magical city manager is going to talk to Dart Corporation because Dart Corporation in other communities has purchased the Styrofoam. So, I'm hoping that this will start maybe a year-long kind of pilot program, test event, to figure out how we can connect Dart Corporation in Ada to us here. Because Dart Corporation, when they make products in Ada, they then ship them in trucks up to Oklahoma City and ship them out to wherever their final destination is. So you have empty or partly empty trucks coming to and from the Dart plant in Ada multiple times a week. So I am very, very, very excited about this. I really think that this is something that could be wonderful for Norman. We would be the first community in Oklahoma to recycle Styrofoam. A product that has a very significant impact on the environment is very difficult to clean. And I'm sure you all have Styrofoam somewhere in your lives. So, starting now, start collecting your Styrofoam. Start telling people you know that if it has a number six on it, it can be recycled as Styrofoam. It just needs to be cleaned and put in a bag and stuck in your garage somewhere until our hazardous waste event on November second. And then Churches Caring for Creation will take it and they'll sort it. And then we'll get it down to Ada to be recycled. So I'm very excited about this. I think this is gonna be really wonderful for Norman. Um and I'm really thankful that our city manager just has unlimited energy to be able to field all of these new projects that I have. So um thanks, Robert. And I also just wanted to say a big thank you and welcome to Lee for all of her hard work in the past and all of the information and knowledge that she's gonna be bringing to this council. I'm looking forward, because as you heard a couple months ago in one of my first TED Talks, talked about R-one zoning um and kind of the changing view on R-one zoning. And I'm really interested to put Lee to the test and sit her down and tell her what I've learned and see if maybe I could move the Overton window for her a little bit on R-one zoning. Uh so that'll be my first big task with her, but I'm really excited to work with you on everything we've got coming up. Because as Councilmember Scott said, we've got a lot on our plate and a lot to tackle. And we need some some real energy up here and we just have added to that again. So, thank you, Lee. Thank you, everyone. And uh we will see you next time.
All right, that leaves me. Kudos to Councilmember Hall. How's that sound? Sound good? Uh for rolling out with a ward meeting, like, wow. Um and thank you to the councilmembers that have already scheduled theirs. We're all working on them. We want to make sure everyone has a chance to get their questions asked and get some answers about the upcoming election. Um I'm working on my forum still, um but thank you all. These colleagues of mine work incredibly hard. As you can see, they're very creative. They're very passionate, which also means that I should thank staff because I'm guilty as much as the next one of throwing all our big ideas at you and hoping you can help us find ways to make them come true. So we couldn't do it without you. We really appreciate all of your hard work. And Brenda, I hope you enjoyed your vacation. We missed you. Ellen, you did good, though. Way to be. Uh with that, um I have no other comments. Um reminder about the Hispanic Heritage Heritage Festival on Saturday. I know I'll be there and I hope to see you there as well. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.